...provides the city attorney with the option that he could file misdemeanor charges against a hospital.
Well, if the hospitals are saying that they would only be charged with a misdemeanor crime, which patient dumping would now become, they could lose federal funding as we understood from the discussion.
That is their interpretation of the law and the city attorney disputes that interpretation. The issue that they are raising is one of a misdemeanor conviction. City attorney believes that that issue impacting federal funding through an exclusion clause does not apply to a local municipal ordinance. And in the interpretation of the city attorney, it appears that it would only apply to convictions under federal or state law.
There have been some examples where the city council has not been comfortable with the position that the city attorney has given to you. Is this an opportunity that you might want to take to consult outside counsel?
No, absolutely not. I mean, I think we were in sync. As you know, the first vote was 12 to 1. There was 12 people who voted yes and only one person who voted no.
No, I understand. I meant in order to make sure that you're on the solid ground as you believe you are.
No, no, they've been working on this for two years.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's not, this is not an overnight ordinance. This is, and an ordinance based on lots and lots of casework, lots of outreach to the hospital association. They actually filed a case against Kaiser and Kaiser has revised and updated their discharge protocols and they're already operating in a manner which would be construed as in conformance with this ordinance even though the ordinance had not even been adopted yet.
Well, if Jan Perry is comfortable with it, then I'm comfortable with it. You're obviously the expert. What's the advantage to hospitals dumping patients? Is some sort of cost savings?
I can't imagine. I couldn't answer that question. I don't know, other than maybe due to a bed shortage and, you know, just a general stress of, you know, hospital that all hospitals go through. I can't imagine that there's an advantage to that.
Obviously, if it's happening in the city of Los Angeles, it's clearly happening as well in the county of Los Angeles because of the overlap.
We had the money brought down from Orange County and dumped in Skid Row just a few weeks ago.
Are you getting any cooperation or any indication of interest in this from the county board of supervisors?
Uh, no.
Okay. It could very well be that that's something that we'll be hearing about soon.
Uh, yes.
Now, as you know, you had proposed a level of sanctions against any hospital that was found to be patient dumping. Could you give us some background on that?
Well, we wanted to seek a level of fine that would, you know, have people make sure that they didn't just incorporate it into the cost of doing business, you know, and just, you know, that it was inconsequential.
Let's make it clear to our viewers, of course, that not all hospitals are guilty of this practice.
That's right.
And it's also other agencies and health providers that may be involved.
Yes. You're absolutely right.
What about a state role in all of this?
Well, they did try to take it to the state and the governor vetoed it at the state level. The hospital lobby is very powerful and was obviously able to, you know, gain ground up at the state level with the legislators there, but such was not to be the case here.
Speaking of the powerful hospital lobby, obviously you're aware that later, in a later session of the city council, there was a change in the level of fine that might be levied against such a hospital.
Yeah, we had to revise that based on advice from the city attorney.
Okay. Can you give us the background on how that came about?
Uh, it was basically, I think they were reviewing state documents and made that recommendation to us. And that was fine.
It's also been suggested, though, in the wake of that, that $1,000 for patient dumping incident, that's just the cost of doing business. That's not a discernment.
Well, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think I'm the one who just suggested that, but then, you know, we still have the issue of the option or this new tool, which the city attorney did not have before, which is the ability, the choice, the option of prosecuting as a misdemeanor.
Okay. And now there's been voted on unanimously for a second time.
Yeah, no, 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 we haven't voted second yet. That'll be coming up next week.
Oh, okay.
Second reading. That's what it's called, second reading.
All right. Well, then we'll look forward to the disposition of it next week.
Yeah.
Before we let you go, Ms. Perry, you're gonna have a new park in your district very soon, an exciting park.
Well, we've been working on it for four years and working with the MTA for four very, very long years. And I feel that people deserve it and I look forward to, you know, having MTA move off the property and us closing the escrow and breaking the ground and doing the testing and creating something beautiful for people.
You and I have discussed before here on Channel 35 the importance of wetlands and especially urban wetlands such as this. Tell us about the park.
Well, it'll be a very large wetland. It'll be about seven acres and it'll be an educational facility. We'll have some of the historic buildings that are on the site now left behind as places for community groups to gather and to hold meetings. And it should be a multi-disciplined park, passive park, that people will be able to find almost anything they want in terms of California native plants, learn about wastewater management and runoff, better management of water, and just replenishing the environment.
That sounds terrific. District 9 Councilmember Jan Perry, as always, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks for having me.
Although item number six passed with a vote of 12 ayes and one no, an ordinance requires a unanimous vote to pass on the first reading. The item was reconsidered at Friday, May 16th meeting, where the maximum fine was set at $1,000, and that passed unanimously. LA City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. and on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending May 16th, 2008. On behalf of Sahel, hello, and everyone here on Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
My name is Pico, and I want to tell you something. From Pacoima to Pico Union, north to north Hollywood, Vatston to Lincoln, backing LA is the best. And so is watching. LA City View 35, it's our city, it's our channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Wednesday, May 21st, 2008. We are waiting a quorum right now, and councilmembers Perry, Reyes, and Rosendahl are here pursuant to council rules on time, but we are still awaiting the following council members to constitute a quorum. We only have 10 members to start, so each of these councilmembers needs to come down as soon as possible. Councilmember Han, councilmember Weezer, councilmember Labange, councilmember Smith, councilmember Weiss, councilmember Wesson, and councilmember Zine. We are broadcast live on Channel 35 for each of our meetings. That is on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35 and those who are in the audience today here into the John Ferraro Council Chambers. That's Room 340 of City Hall, which is at 200 North Spring Street in downtown. We meet the first Friday of the month in the Van Nuys City Council Chambers off of Van Nuys Boulevard. We are also available online at lacity.org, and if you click on the links there, you can always catch our live streaming webcast of our council meetings. And there's also archived footage of our past council meetings there online, as well as a wealth of information on city services, on 311, your elected officials, and other ways to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. We also are available through your telephones by calling council phone, which is a service of the city, (213) 621-CITY. That's (213) 621-CITY. You can listen not only to the council meetings, but any of our committee meetings as well. You can sign up for podcasts online and get old audio footage of those meetings as well. We now have five members, councilmembers Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Weiss. We are still awaiting Ms. Han, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Labange, Mr. Smith, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Zine. We have excuses on the desk today for Mr. Alakon, Ms. Gruhl, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Reyes. They are not expected, and Mr. Cardenas is arriving at 11:15. But otherwise, we do expect a full complement of a quorum here shortly. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items that are before us, members of the public are permitted to speak on any of those items that are on our agenda. If they have not yet received a public hearing in committee, you can do so here by filling out a public speaking card in the back and handing that to one of the sergeants-at-arms at the aisles here. Or in Van Nuys, we also have staff there, so you can remotely testify from Van Nuys, if that's closer to where you live, in our efforts to bring city council closer to all Angelenos. Our agendas are available online in the city clerk's office and also in person here in council chambers. Those are available 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special agendas. All items that are discussed are before us, are on those agendas, except for any that may come up due to emergency motions under Rule 23 of the council rules. We are still awaiting councilwoman Han, councilmember Weezer, councilmember Labange, councilmember Wesson, and councilmember Zine. As soon as we have those members here, we will begin this meeting. This is our third and final quorum call for those council members. If they'll please make their way as soon as possible to council chambers. If we can't reach a quorum today, we will not have a meeting. Thank you, Mr. Natsch. This is a final quorum call for councilmember Han, councilmember Weezer, councilmember Labange, and councilmember Wesson. We don't see these councilmembers here. Ms. Han is here. We don't see councilmember Weezer, Labange, and Wesson shortly. We will adjourn the meeting. And with a surprise last-minute visit from Mr. Alakon, who did have an excuse on the desk. Thank you, Mr. Alakon, for being here. We do have a quorum. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruhl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Wesson moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next item?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Alakon seconds. Without objection, the two will be approved. Next order of business, if we can run through the agenda, please.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 6 are items noticed for public hearing. The recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to June 11th.
Okay. If there's no objection to opening those public hearings and continuing the ordinance to the 11th of June, so ordered. Next item, please.
Next item is item 7, and there also is a public comment item or a public hearing item, and that does have a card.
Okay, we'll call that special for card from the public. Next item, please.
Item number 8 is also a public hearing item, and there is a request to continue that matter to June 25th.
Okay, without objection, we'll continue that till June 25th on item number 8. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 9 through 17. Item 9 and 10 are commissioners. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the commissioner nominations on the desk.
And that would leave before council 11 through 17.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl?
Special.
15 for Mr. Rosendahl. Other members wishing to call items special? This is 11 now through 17, 11 through 17. We are still expecting Mr. Labange. Mr. Labange will please make his way to council chambers so we could constitute 12 members for these ordinances. Let's hold the ordinances on the desk, 16 and 17. If nobody wishes to call special, let's take those two up. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 18 through 32. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, if there's no objection to consideration, those items are before us. Ms. Han, do you have them? 32 for Ms. Han. Mr. Weezer?
Please.
20 for Mr. Weezer. And do we have cards on any of these as well?
Uh, yes, I believe there are cards on 22 and 26.
Okay. Call those special for cards from the public. We'll go ahead and open and close the other public hearings. If there's no other specials, let's go ahead on the ballot. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. If we can go to the next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 33. That's a closed session. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold 33 on the desk.
And do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
Yes, please. Call the roll for the special meeting.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruhl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. Colleagues, we have items 34 and 35 before us. Anybody wishing to call that special? 35 for Mr. Rosendahl. Let's go ahead on 34 then and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item?
Next item on the special meeting agenda is item 36, and that's also a closed session item. Do you wish to continue that into the regular meeting?
Yes, please. Let's continue 36 into the regular meeting. Sorry, let's call it special and then continue those special items into the regular meeting and adjourn the special meeting.
Okay.
Okay. That'll take us to general public comment now. We can have items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city council. We have two minutes per speaker, both here in Van Nuys. Our first speaker is here in council chambers, Zuma Dog. He'll be followed by Rick Nightingale out in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Dog.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, City Council. Good morning, city of Los Angeles. First of all, on Time Warner, this Saturday at 9:00 p.m., Zuma Dog with Villarosa. And I'd like to invite all the city council members to tune in because Zuma Dog with his Zuma cam has exclusive footage of Mayor Antonio Villarosa. He spoke with Zuma Dog here in the rotunda. That will be broadcast Saturday night, 9:00 p.m., Time Warner out of the Santa Monica system, and it is now available for a preview at zoomatube.com. If you go to zoomatube.com, you can get a preview of the episode, and it does have Mayor Antonio, so it is city business. Now, also, speaking of Mayor Antonio, you know, he says that he didn't know about the budget crisis. He said he didn't see it coming, and, you know, gee, he gave out 20% raises to the union just to secure their vote, and he says he didn't know. Well, let me tell you somebody who did know, Zuma Dog. And I'm not saying that the mayor has to listen and read my blogs, but I did blog extensively about this. So I'm saying if, maybe I should put my name on the ballot and run for mayor, because you're telling me that Zuma Dog, May of '07, blogged that the subprime crisis is coming and it will trigger a recession, and I got that from Senator Chuck Schumer. And if anybody doubts that, just do a search for Zuma Dog Subprime Recession. And so I knew that this was coming, and the mayor, this is outrageous, but here's, this isn't your fault, council, but here's what you're gonna have to deal with. Oil is at 130 a barrel, and you can see gold will skyrocket. If your investors in the stock market pull out now, and a warning to everybody, stock market alert. The stock market will not be able to sustain. This economy will not be able to sustain. With oil at these prices, food will cost more to produce and deliver. People will be spending all their money on gas. They'll be cutting back on their trips. Stores will be closing. Businesses will be going out of business. Nobody thought this would happen. It's due to the sinking dollar, and the Saudis are having to make up for the difference. And so please belt tighten, my final statement. All of this means you're not even close to belt tightening. Really belt tighten an extra couple notches. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Rick Nightingale is our next speaker out in Van Nuys. After that, we'll be Sharon Brewer, also in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Yeah, my name's Rick Nightingale. Good morning. This is regarding the police department, the fire department. I'll go with the police department, the fire department first regarding, I don't understand why these people just can't get along with themselves regardless... people just can't get along with themselves regarding, they're playing in the sandbox, and then they turn around and get mad at each other, and then they turn around and have a gender and a minority beef with each other. I don't understand this. We, the people, do not have to pay for their idiotic mistakes, that if they can't get along with themselves, why can't they do something else then? I don't understand why, if they're going to play these games, why don't they turn around and we take it out of their budget? If they turn around and lost money out of their budget, every time one of their friends or fellow comrades do something stupid, they might do something about it. They could, it's really bad when you ignore somebody when they do something bad, and you just don't talk to them. You know, it really gives an effect to them like, man, I really messed up. Why don't they do it like the regular people, like when you have a company, you have to have an umbrella, you know, like what, they could deduct it on their income tax. Every one of them, the police and the fire, have an umbrella, like a million dollars, so when they screw up, they have to pay. It comes out of their pay, and they have to pay it. If they make a really blunder on a stupid mistake, let them pay for it. If it costs them house, that's their problem. When they can't get along with each other in the firehouse, they're not even out in the public, and then we have to pick up the tab? I don't see where any other company that when an employee does something wrong, they pick, the company picks up the tab. I just don't understand this, that it's up to you people on the council to take care of this kind of stuff, it's not us. You just need to clamp down on them and tell them that there's just no reason to be doing this, and there is going to be a penalty, a harsh one. You turn around and you suspend them for 30 days, that hurts? If not, you turn around and you fire them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After that's Arnold Sacks here in council chambers.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Public comment. City council's special event fee waivers, gift of public funds, totals continue to mount every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Since July 1st, 2007, over $5,41,161 have been used for events that benefit a specific area or group of people. None of these fee waivers, or gifts of public fund, or use of public staff, um, sorry. Yesterday, city council waived $130,255 for 14 events. $64,963 for an event that expected 70,000 people. If they charged each person 93 cents, the fee waiver's gone. An event for $1,642, 1,000 people expected, $1.64 each, fee waiver gone. $5,178 event, 2,000 people expected, $2.59 each, fee waiver gone. $17,374 event, 60,000 people expected, 29 cents each. Just with those four events, that's almost $90,000 that could be saved by the city if people putting on the events would take and charge the people going to the events. You can't tell me that people can't afford to take and pay if they want to go to a event. $2,829 event for a block party rummage sale, the city now paying for rummage or garage sales. Most events listed did not say what the event was for, no direct public benefit listed. How can city council members approve special event fee waivers without listing a direct public benefit? Again, you need to stop the fee waivers until the budget is in line.
Mr. Sacks is our next speaker here. After that is Chuck Tenen.
Arnold Sacks, thank you very much. Congratulations on finding that $95 million that was recently discovered last week. I guess that necessitates, or helped to necessitate the fact that you did not have to discuss, have any discussions regarding pay cuts or the pay freeze for the city council and/or the city employees. Will that mean that these options, the cuts for pay, will no longer be a topic of discussion regarding any further cuts to the budget? Also, recently, the county board of supervisors found some redundancies in the fingerprinting process used by the sheriff's department. These same supervisors sit on the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, the only governing body legally recognized by the state legislation to operate transit programs in the county of L.A. So I thought I'd bring you up to date on some of the redundancies in the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authorities under their venue. You have the Gold Line, the Expo Line, the Orange Line, the Mid-City Connector. You have, under consideration, the Crenshaw Prairie Line, the Expo Line Phase Two, the Orange Line. You also have the foothill, the Gold Line Foothill Construction Authority. Now, the city of L.A. has added the Mid-City Expo Line. You have also the Expo Line. You have the Subway to the Sea, the Red Line, the Purple Line, the Pasadena Gold Line, the Wilshire Corridor. All these projects named for all the construction going on in L.A. Seems to me you only have four or five projects, but you have 12 different names, all being funded. According to the county board of supervisors, these were all voted on. Thank you for their time and their effort in leading the city and county in the transportation battle we face every day. Thank you for your time, your answers, and your attention.
Thank you very much. Chuck Tenen is our next speaker.
Morning, councilmembers. President Garcetti, Janice Han's $30 million parcel tax to fund gang prevention, youth programs, and intervention programs. Well, Greg Smith recently, who supports Janice's motion, said in the Daily News that voters won't support it. Well, Greg Smith, why don't you support Janice Han's two big events that are forthcoming? You support her thing, you know what? Why don't you support her? She's got two projects. One of them's a 100-word essay contest, Stop the Violence, We Can All Live in Peace. And the purpose of it is to raise funding for youth programs, to encourage kids, and kids are the future of this city. And 100 essays will be chosen. A lot of great things will come from that. The second part is a big music event that everybody's excited about. You're a drummer. I hope you participate and support Janice Han's big program because a lot of people love it. And you know what? It's another way that's going to raise a lot of revenue for this city because the public will do it, just like my parking thing that I proposed. If you take up two spots in city-owned public parking, guess what? $50 fine. So you're not asking the public for more money. What you're doing is you're getting additional revenue that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars, and you're discouraging people from taking up two spots, and they do it every single day. That's more revenue, and you should do that. Back to the music event, it's going to be one of the biggest things this city's ever seen, and you know what? Everybody wants to do it. It's going to raise a lot of money for the programs and that, and the public will love it because they want to be involved. And Greg Smith, I hope you're in there, and Eric Garcetti, because he plays the piano.
For the record, he should be directing his comments to the council as a whole.
Thank you. Olga Hall is our next speaker. We'll put, the band is back.
Good morning, members of the council. Many of you have accepted everything Autry has told you, just like those politicians that lend their name to the Southwest Society. They trusted that Councilman Weezer and the mayor were telling them the truth. And out of courtesy, they accepted to be part of the Southwest Society without knowing the truth of the matter. They became part of the plot to deceive their friends and supporters and the people. Eight months have passed since the Southwest Society was announced. The sole purpose for it was, for it to exist is to raise funds for the Southwest Museum. All the fundraising done by Councilman Weezer, the mayor, and the Autry has produced zero. To this day, we have not heard of any fundraising done by the Southwest Society. Was the Southwest Society created to use it as a political pawn and boycott the friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition Air Force at the Latino Congreso? Was it created to have Autry look ethical, or both? Councilman Weezer, you know the answers.
Excuse me, the speaker should be directing her comments to the council as a whole.
Okay.
If you could give us your comments, thank you.
Autry did not have any money to make any repairs on the Southwest Museum or restore and clean the artifacts at the time of the merger. Their purpose is very clear. They came to loot the museum. So please remember all these details. It's very important for you to know that Autry lies.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Weezer, for a brief comment?
Excuse me, ma'am. If you want to, ma'am, if you want to speak with me, we could go to the side here so we could talk about the issues you raised, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. That'll close our general public comment. If we can take up the ordinances now that we have 12 members, please.
And that would be items 11, 12, 13, and 14.
Correct. Please open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next item called special, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up the commissioners, items nine and 10? They're both confirmations to the housing authority.
Yeah, let's do those, and then we'll, let's do nine, 10, then we'll come back for seven. If we can take up nine and 10, I'd like to recognize, if I can ask our nominees to come forward to the table, please, for our commissioner, and I'd like to recognize our great chair of the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wesson, for some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. This morning in committee, we had an opportunity to have discussions with Ms. Gar and Ms. Maldonado about their pending appointment. The committee was very impressed with their commitment and desire, and we voted unanimously for the council to support the, or to confirm, the mayor's recommendation. I would hope that the members of this council who weren't on the committee would follow the lead of our committee and in turn give a unanimous vote. There are two outstanding individuals. One is Los Angeles-born and raised, and from Mr. Labange, who I don't think is here, from, yeah, there he is, from Palisades High, okay?
The Dolphins, see?
And see, he already, I mean, he, this was the man that I was referring to earlier. The, Ms. Maldonado hails from Fresno and has a relationship with my former member in the Assembly, Sarah Reyes. So I think we've got two outstanding appointments, and I will ask them to briefly say a little something about themselves and then request that we confirm them unanimously.
Thank you, Councilman Wesson. My name is Margarita Gar, and I'm very happy for this opportunity. Have been a longtime advocate and very involved within the community, and I'm looking forward to working on the Housing Authority Board.
My name is Alicia Maldonado, and I am very pleased to be in front of the city council today for this confirmation appointment. And I have been in Los Angeles for about 25 years and have been very active with a number of committee outreach and committee issues during that time, and also look forward to representing, refereeing on the commission of the Housing Authority.
Ms. Han is our next speaker.
Thank you. Well, I certainly want to thank you for agreeing to step up to the plate on what I consider to be a very difficult commission that oversees, you know, difficult challenges and positive opportunities within the Housing Authority of the city of Los Angeles. I have more housing developments in my council district than anyone else. I have four right in the city of, in the community of Watts. And one of the things I'd love to invite both of you to come and attend is the Watts Gang Task Force. It meets every Monday in my office there at Compton and 103rd. And many of the people that show up on Monday morning come from our developments. And I will tell you, there is a great core group of people who are residents of the developments, who want to improve conditions, want to improve what's happening, but many times are frustrated for what seems to be a feeling of lack of services, lack of attention, you know. I frankly drove through Nickerson the other night on the way to our first Moonlight Basketball League, which I will give a shout out to Rudy and the Housing Authority for helping to fund 12 teams that are going to be playing basketball in Nickerson Gardens. But just driving through Nickerson Gardens, I was very appalled by what I perceived as, again, bad living conditions. I mean, it looked like there was trash everywhere, there was standing water in the gutters, you know, and I think these are residents of the city of Los Angeles and deserve to have the same attention and resources put on them that everybody expects and deserves in the city of Los Angeles. So I'd love for both of you to come one Monday morning, hear from the residents, talk about common solutions to the problems that have historically plagued those who live in our housing projects.
Thank you. I would love to do that. I just wanted to make a comment, too. I want to thank you for your gang task force work and also for the Moonlight Basketball. And I think that the strategic plan that is before the Housing Authority right now, I think, does provide us with an opportunity to address some of the challenges that you raised, and I think we're in a good position to make some movement in that area.
And there's a great synergy between the Housing Authority and our Department of Recreation and Parks in terms of trying to provide opportunities, recreational opportunities, particularly for our kids who are at risk, and I consider every kid who is growing up right now as a resident of one of our developments at risk. They're facing enormous challenges because of their poverty, not as many job opportunities, and so we really need to give extra dose of alternatives for these kids so that they don't join gangs.
Yes.
And I will say again, I want to put you on alert, and again, Rudy's been terrific about the summer jobs. We're counting, particularly in Watts, for a number of summer jobs that come through the Housing Authority that a lot of these kids depend on to make it through the summer months. So congratulations. I'm here to work with you, but love for you to come on Monday morning and talk to some of the people that you, as well as I, will be serving in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. Likewise, I want to thank you for your willingness to serve and to echo some of my colleagues' sentiments. I believe this is a tough job because, one, we have folks who depend on the Housing Authority for a very basic need, which is housing, a roof over their heads, and many of these people are dependent on our support, and many of these people sometimes depend on your support to make sure that we are as responsive as we can be. I have about three and a half housing areas, I say and a half because one got remodeled recently, and, um, still, well, and we, when I visit those places, one of the things they often bring up to me is the need to improve some of the conditions, and so I hope that you are alert. I know you wouldn't be serving on this if you weren't concerned and committed to it. I read your background, excellent background. I know you will, Alicia. I've known you since your days on Maldef, and I know you have that commitment to do that, so I thank you for your service. And I wanted to point out one other thing, just to, if you could be aware of while you surround here, at the Estrada Courts housing area, we had established one of the first gang reduction zones that we are now modeling a lot of our anti-gang efforts on in the city. Very successful. The residents there continue to meet each and every night, and they look at the work that we did in cooperation, cooperation with the city attorney's office, the county, our LAPD, and social services in order to address the one very problematic gang issues they had there. So that's a great place to look at, to see what is working, and as I mentioned, that's going to be used as a model for the rest of the city. So it's a great place to see what else could be replicated in other housing areas that are having similar issues. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Anybody else wish to be heard on these two great nominees? If not, let's make it official. Now, let's go ahead, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Round of applause to our new commissioner. Congratulations. If we can go back to item seven, please.
And also, Mr. President, Mr. Rosendahl called item 35 special, and he's advised that his
that his questions have been answered and that item doesn't need to be called special anymore.
Okay, let's go ahead and take up 35 then, quick. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number seven called special for cards from the public.
Okay, if we can make some space by the podium there for a public comment, please. Mr. Alietti, would you be kind enough to help move folks along a little bit there? And Zuma Dog is our next speaker on item number seven. Is Zuma Dog here?
Yes.
Item seven, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Dog passes on that, we'll close the hearing. And on number 11, seven, excuse me, that requires a motion?
Yes, and the recommendation is on the agenda to grant the application.
Okay, let's go ahead and move that then. Please open the roll on seven. As moved, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 15, and that was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Okay, Ms. Perry, would you like to make some opening comments first? Ms. Perry?
Mr. Miller wants to, yeah, Mr. Miller's here to go to the middle table. The Grand Avenue project on Bunker Hill encompasses the final four parcels of the 1959 Bunker Hill redevelopment project, which consists of 26 blocks labeled A to Z. On parcel Q, the parcel directly east of the wall at Disney Concert Hall, where there is a tinker toy, tinker toy style garage, there will be an iconic mixed-use project designed by Frank Gehry, and this will be the defining part of the Grand Avenue project. Parcel Q will contain housing, both for rent and for sale, as well as market rate and affordable dining and hotel components, all with parking. Parcel Q represents a substantial investment by the related companies. The property within the project will remain within the ownership of the county and the redevelopment agency, but under a long-term lease to the related companies. There will be a continuing revenue stream to the public this way, but the developer has no land-based rights in this project. The CLA has confirmed that there's a gap within the project's finances that needs to be filled in order for the project to remain viable. To that end, this City Council requested in May 2007 that the City Attorney begin the process to bring forth documents relevant to the formation of a community taxing district. The monies that will fund this community taxing district are net new revenue. The district will rebate a total of $66 million, including transit occupancy tax and parking revenue tax, for a period up to 20 years on hotel money and up to 10 years on the parking money or until the cap is reached. There is a community benefits package, which includes 20% affordable housing, 16-acre linear park between City Hall and the Music Center, a project labor agreement with local higher construction requirements. Further benefits include pedestrian and street scape improvements on Grand Avenue and over 2,500 units of new housing, 20% of which are affordable, a five-star hotel, 750 parking spaces. This is a $2.5 billion project that will help downtown reach the next level, to make downtown a place to go, not a place to go through, and this will be a source of new revenue and, I hope, a great source of pride. And with that, I've asked Mr. Miller to be here at the table so that he can answer my colleagues' questions.
Thank you. It's called special by Mr. Rosendahl. We'll go next. Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, good morning, Jerry. Jerry, and I'm just, when we went through budget process, I saw the country of Dubai all of a sudden as a substitute investor in the thing. That perked my interest. Then also, I was trying to get a handle on what is really the subsidy that, that out of this comes out, what are the dollar figures? So let me ask you a question, a fresh question, okay? What is, is the significance? Let's just start with the funding issue about what we're really talking about, okay? 60.5 million in present value of transit occupancy tax, a general fund revenue source of up to 20 years, is being provided in the Grand Avenue project. A 2007 PKF report accompanying the CLA analysis stated the present value of the estimated transit occupancy cost to be 47.5 million, and the actual dollar value was 123 million. Has the PKF report been updated? What is the maximum actual dollar value of the transit occupancy tax subsidy? Is there any limit on the total lost transit occupancy tax revenue to the city? What I'm trying to say, and I am a total layman on this stuff, is we've seen dollars moving around, 47 million, then to 60 million. Would you help me understand what that's all about? And what are we really looking at?
Certainly. What we're looking at here is the cap in the agreements is 60.5 million net present value in transit occupancy tax. Now, the point of all of this is to make sure that the city is not subsidizing any more than is absolutely required to get the project built. So the deal calls for, when the hotel is actually financed and constructed, we will go back in, we will calculate the actual gap in funding, and then that 60.5 million dollar cap may very well be lowered. It will not increase. So that is a maximum outside present value over a period of 20 years.
So the total actual dollars, what are we really looking at overall?
Well, the total gross dollars, you know, it depends on the flow of the transit occupancy tax. It could be as much as, you know, 127 million, but the present value of that, it depends on when it comes in, but the present value of that, the amount needed to finance the gap in the construction of the hotel is capped at a present value of 60.5 million today. It will be recalculated when the hotel is done so that the city is not subsidizing any more than is required to get the hotel built.
Yeah, but the real dollars of today are different than the other dollars. I mean, we're looking at different dollar figures in the real sense of the word, aren't we?
Well, again, there's the, there's the gross dollar amount and the present value. We always present to you present value issues because you need, we need to evaluate these in today's dollars, not dollars over the next 20 years.
Yeah. So in other words, has the report been updated enough to make that clear from the 2007?
Again, the, what the council approved last year, actually, it's been a little over a year when the council approved all the deal points. The report hasn't been updated because it doesn't make sense to update that report until the hotel is built. The cap cannot go above 60.5 million. It can go lower. So the report will be updated when the hotel is financed and constructed.
Okay, again, I'm naive on this. As a matter of practice, we will subsidize the parking and the bed tax for a period of years. Is that part of an incentive to bring in investors?
It is. We've, we've done this, the similar type of, essentially what we're using is net new, site-specific tax revenue, revenue that they are generating that we would not otherwise have. That's the only money that's going into the project. By city policy, no more than 50% of that net new revenue can go into the project. So we are, we are only providing up to half of what they generate over the next 20 years to make the project feasible. And we've done this in smaller projects, Molton Square, Blossom Plaza, and Mr. Reyes' district. The first time we did this was for the River Center in connection with the Home Depot over there. We've done it on larger projects such as Hollywood Highland and the Sports and Entertainment District. So it's a mechanism used citywide to protect the general fund base. It is at no time at risk. It is putting half of the net new money that they generate from the project back into the project to make it feasible.
Okay, then the last question on this issue is, what is the maximum actual dollar value of the transit occupancy tax subsidy? What is the maximum actual dollar value of the transit occupancy tax subsidy? Is there any limit on the total lost transit occupancy tax revenue to the city?
Yes, the limit is, in today's dollars, 60 and a half million dollars for 20 years. If over 20 years, they never generate a net present value of 60 and a half, it stops at that point. So it will be no more than 16 and a half million in today's dollars.
Okay, so when I hear rumors and reports that we're really looking at 150 million, not just this, am I just not knowing what I'm talking about?
Well, what you're hearing is mixing apples and oranges. People are mixing the gross value over 20 years with what the value is today, and today's dollar value is what we need to use to evaluate whether or not the participation from the public is appropriate.
Okay, but it's still confusing for me. Here's another set of questions. We recently learned that Calpers dropped out as an investor in the project, and Dubai Sovereign Fund has been substituted in its place. Are there other sovereign funds being solicited as investors in this project? What's the deal? Dubai moves in, we lose Calpers, we can end up seeing China and others coming in here? What's your sense of the investing partners at this point?
Well, to my knowledge, there is, there are no other substitutions or other investors like that being contemplated. You are correct, Calpers was initially an investor, they did drop out.
And that's the deal? We cut, had Calpers in it, and so they now moved out and Dubai is in.
Well, again, to be clear, our contractual relationship is going to be with the related companies. The council did not approve the whole makeup of that. Our contractual relationship is with only the related companies. The JPA, of which the city is a member, and the CRA and the county, the JPA was involved with approving the overall deal, and they did approve the substitution of the Dubai fund for Calpers.
Okay. The related companies, I understand, to be the lead or managing partner of this project. What is their equity in the project?
Well, again, we don't know that. It's going to be, the total equity in the project will be a minimum of 30%, but as I said, when the project is done, we will recalculate exactly how much equity and debt is in the project and recalculate the gap in financing.
What is the impact of the change in parties to our memorandum of understanding?
None.
How has this change affected the value of assurances given to the city under the MOU? Inherent in that is the big question. Hasn't the city assumed more risk, or am I wrong on that?
Absolutely not. The city is at no risk here. The city will only be participating if the project gets built. If the project gets built and the money's not generated, the developer does not get any money. In the worst case, the city will end up with a 16-acre public park and no money out, out the door. That is the worst case. So there is, the substitution of Dubai for Calpers presents no additional risk to the city.
Okay, and if I could just have, and you've answered pretty much everything. And the LA Weekly said, "The Dubai royal family is very autocratic and secretive organization. Without public subsidy, it's likely that no project would be built on the site and would generate no tax revenue." These are their statements in the newspaper. "The project continues to have trouble finding construction financing due to the tight credit markets." And then Supervisor Michael Antonovich was an elected official who said that, "If private investors aren't willing to gamble on this project, then why should the taxpayers of the city and the county be forced?" Respond to that?
Well, it is a true statement that without the subsidy, the project is not going to get built. And we, we didn't just decide that. We had a consultant, PKF Consulting, perhaps the premier hotel consultant in the country, opine that the project is not going to get built without the public participation. I would say, however, that, again, the city taxpayers are at no risk here. At no point is tax money that's currently being generated at risk. The only participation would be new revenue that's generated from the project and only half of that new revenue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Zion.
Thank you. Jerry, you've been around a long time.
Yes, sir.
Is this a good project for the City of Los Angeles?
Yes, sir.
Economically for the City of Los Angeles?
Yes, it is.
How much is the county putting in, since it's their property? How much are they putting in financially?
I believe the cash they're putting in is somewhere in the order of $5 million plus property.
$5 million plus what?
Plus the, plus the property.
So the county is subsidizing along with the city?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And our subsidy is equal to the county or less than the county?
From a dollar standpoint, our subsidy is probably greater than the county, but then again, the revenues are coming to us, not the county. The county doesn't have a hotel tax. The property tax until 2013 is flowing to the CRA, and then the city will get its portion. So the revenue flows that are being used are city revenue flows. The county doesn't have those revenue flows.
The issue of changing dollars, Mr. Rosendahl discussed this part. $20 today is not going to be $20 20 years from now. We talk about construction costs, as the construction costs escalate. The dollars that we're putting in, that's benched at a certain level. What happens if that gap can't be met because of escalating costs? What happens to the project?
Again, that is not our problem. That is a problem of the developers. If that, if the project doesn't open and generate revenues, they don't get anything. So the whole-
But then we're, but aren't we out money then?
No.
Why?
Because, because the only money that the city would be putting into this is money that the project generates. So if the developer is unable to get the loans and unable to develop the property, there is no money being generated, therefore, the city is not putting in any money. In that event, what we end up with is the $56 million public park.
$56 million public park.
Right, from private sources.
Could be equal to how many acres?
That's about 15 and a half acres, I believe.
Or we could put a commercial development, or is it earmarked for a park if it doesn't work out?
Again, we're talking about the county mall here between the Music Center, and it is county property, and it is designated to be, it's actually been designated to be park and open space for probably 60 years now.
So one or the other, it's going to remain either what it's earmarked for, or if not, then it will convert to a park, and there's no loss to the taxpayers if that project doesn't complete?
Exactly.
And as far as developers coming in, whether it be Dubai or some other part of the world, is it continuing to change hands because of the economic situation, or is it relatively stable? Who wants to develop? And if I look at Staples, Staples is doing extremely well. That entire area is being built in the Ninth District. Maybe that'll happen here. If it doesn't happen, the prospects?
I mean, I think that's key to the way this is structured. Again, the taxpayers are not at risk here. If the project doesn't happen, we don't lose anything. If the project does happen, we gain a great deal. So there, there is no risk, and the complications of, of the development and the equity partners and putting all that together is a complication where it should be with the developer. We are not developers. So the city taxpayers are protected. There really is no downside, and there's substantial upside.
So our subsidies would come after the project's built? If the project's not complete, it'll be a park, and there'll be no loss to the taxpayers when it comes to the dollars?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. We had, Mr. Labange?
Well, thank you very much.
Press your button.
Just excited about this effort here. Just a question on the mall itself, because I believe, if my facts are correct, the Civic Center of Los Angeles from Figueroa Street through to Alameda Street is the largest concentration of federal, state, and local buildings, courthouses, et cetera, than any other part of the world except, any part of the country except Washington, DC. That's correct, Mr. Miller?
That's correct.
And across the street, if I open that window there behind the sergeant, there's a parking lot. Will this address that parking lot?
It will.
This is very important. So this is very important. This will be finally the completed mall of the Civic Center of Los Angeles and this whole project. So that will address that issue?
It will.
Will there be any, you know what a knockout panel is for MTA, where they, right now they have a exit on Hill Street on the east side, an exit at First and Hill on the southeast corner. It's the exits out of the subway. Will any of the, any of this address any better access to the red line, or could it be looked at, at least in some planning form? One of our challenges members is with the subway system, is sometimes they only have one exit here, one exit there. And in Europe, you know, sometimes they have multiple exits which spread, you know, the proper development or the proper balance. If you could just look at that in any way, not that it's be included in this package, but look at that so they think to bang those panels out. And I got to ask the President of the City Council, may I ask you a question, Mr. President? Do you know why the subway went down Hill Street instead of Spring Street?
No, Mr. Labange, why?
Because the board of supervisors had more votes than us, and that's where the Hall of Administration, is that correct, Mr. Miller?
I will take your word for it.
I think, I think so.
Very well said.
But I think I'd love to see a knockout panel this way to try to get a little access, better access. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. We had a public hearing in full committee on this. We would require somebody to reopen it, but we do not have a card that we've had to request in, so seeing none, free reopening. Let's go ahead and open the roll on this. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Okay, that is approved.
And the ordinance goes over.
That'll carry over, I'm sorry, that'll carry over one week because of a non-unanimous vote. That'll next be before us next Wednesday. Next item, please.
Next item's item-
Thirty-five, we'll send forth with, without objection. Next item called special, please.
Next item's item number 20. That was called special by Councilmember Weisar, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Okay. Mr. Weisar, do you want to say anything?
Thank you, Mr. President. The amending motion takes care of my concerns. We're, we're fine with that. That amending motion could pass, please, with a nay vote. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead and open the roll on item 20. We have no cards on this. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. We have one on 22.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Next item, please.
Next item's item number 22, and that was called special for cards.
Okay. We have first Sharon Brewer out in the San Fernando Valley, and then Arnold Sacks. After that, Ms. Brewer?
Thank you, Sharon Brewer, item number 22. We have nine total, nine with amounts $30,766. We have a couple of block parties. We have an item that is sponsored, it's So Row, it's $3,000 on June 1st. The sponsor is South Robertson Neighborhood Council, So Row Inc., and LA Department of Cultural Affairs. According to the Dunn website, as of May 1st, the South Robertson Neighborhood Council has over $70,838.59, and they haven't submitted their paperwork from January to June of '07. So again, I'm questioning, people want to know why the Neighborhood Councils aren't spending their money, but yet you have a Neighborhood Council with over $70,000 in their bank account that is included in a fee waiver for $3,000. Again, with the fee waivers, with the block parties, the people can figure out a way to have a block party without closing off a street, which would save them money because they don't have to pay the fee, and they could still have the block party. But, again, look at these events that are specific for people that are having carnivals and stuff, and just charge a minimal amount, and you wouldn't have all these fee waivers coming out of the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker on item 22.
Yes, good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly, well, actually, two things. With the special event fees, since nobody's been able to blink their eye and nobody's going to really want to do anything, again, I bring to the council chambers the idea of setting a ceiling limit for the special event fees of maybe $2,000 per fee. Anything over that would be covered by the party wishing to have the event held. That way, it would be equitable and even to all parties who want to have a special event held within the city. And then, I'd also like to point out that in the item, that number 15, by May, there was hearings held here with a commissioner from the public work-
We can't talk about item 15.
I know, you can't talk about it.
Mr. Sacks, I know you know those rules and we-
Well, the rules are that if commissioners come in and talk about it, then those council members have an opportunity to ask questions then.
And we had the public hearing in the committee this morning.
And the questions should have been asked then by the council members. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Appreciate your comments on item 22. That will close our public comments on 22. I have one for 26 from you. I do not have 22, Mr. Dogg. Would you like to speak on 22?
No.
Okay. No, we had no card on 20 either, I'm sorry. So let's go ahead and open the roll on 22. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 26, called special for cards.
Okay. We do have your card on that, Mr. Dogg, number 26, and then Arnold Sacks as well on item 26. Like to come forward on that.
Boy, you know what? I'd just like to say for the record, a lot of bullshit going on here, because you're not supposed to have, not supposed to-
Mr. Dogg? Sir? If you'll, if you'll please try to use language, well, hold your time, hold on. If you'll try, please try to use language that does not disrupt the meeting. If you'll please try to use language that does not disrupt the meeting. Again, we have students that come in here, we have other people. I'm asking you, I'm asking you, please do. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And please make sure, please allow the council to, the president to run the meeting, not random council members who are control freaks. I appreciate that. And now, this is about tax equity and, so, bond insurance, okay? It's a hearing relating bond insurance. I'm here to warn council that we're having a huge fiscal problem. If you thought subprime is bad, wait till you hear about the bond insurance crisis. And I blog more about it at strategyupdate.com. I get a little upset now and rattled when all these things happen. But basically, what happens is, bond insurers, there's all these deals that people make, I'm not going to get into it, it's a lot of smoke and mirrors. It's much worse. If you think the stock market crashed in January and February, well, it was in a large part due to the bond insurance derivative market, and George Bush had to come out and do a lot of smoke and mirrors to prop it back up, to try to keep things through the elections. This is where belt tightening comes in. Now, this is not city council's fault, the bond insurance crisis. However, it is your fault if you do not fiscally become more responsible and prudent and belt tightened, because, again, Zuma Dogg's been coming here for two years, talking about a lot of things. The number one citizens' alert I can give the city of Los Angeles is the fiscal crisis is much worse than anybody planned on. We saw it with subprime and the foreclosures, and that was a drop in the bucket. The real problem that the market's going to tank and everybody's value's going to be cut down by about 60 percent is over the bond insurance credit markets. Please have Jerry Miller, the CLA, come out and explain really what has to happen. Wow, are you people holding stocks going to be in big trouble. Zumatimes.com.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker on item 26.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks, item 26. Please, for clarification, is it a Tax Equity Responsibility Act and a Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, or a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982? Are they separate and equal? The reason I ask is because recently, the city, without in wonderment, entered into a contract agreement with the County Board of Supervisors to run the Sunshine Canyon landfill in some kind of commission. The County Board of Supervisors, when they had that item, the Sunshine Canyon landfill on their agenda, doubled the intake of the Sunshine Canyon landfill from 6,000 tons daily to 12,100 tons daily, for a total of what used to be 36,000 tons daily to 66,600 tons daily.
Mr. President, he doesn't appear to be talking about the item on the agenda.
Sir, we are talking about fiscal responsibility. Please explain to the public what the fiscal-
Sir, I'm sorry, we'll hold your time as well. This is on a Tefra hearing of the Lise International School of Los Angeles, and there's a bond issue about that, but just because it says the word responsibility, that's not quite germane. So if you could actually comment on the Lise bond issuance or anything having to do with those specific types of bond issuances, that would be germane.
I'm talking about a fiscal responsibility act. The city is under some kind of obligation to be fiscal responsible?
No, that refers to the Tefra-
Oh, well, then, in that case, that explains everything. If they're not as responsible, then who gives a rat's batoot? Thank you for your time and your answers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. We do ask folks to try to comment specifically on that. General public comment is for items that are of a general nature such as that, that are of interest to us. So please open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 32, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
All right, Ms. Hahn, next item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a motion that Councilmember Parks and Councilmember Perry and I introduced to ask LA Unified School District to come before this body and explain how some circumstances led to what we think was an unfortunate and tragic transference of an assistant principal who had been under allegations for inappropriate relationships with young people, how he could have been transferred to Markham Middle School in Watts, which later also led to an inappropriate relationship with one of the students. And, you know, we talk about this all the time in terms of our relationship to the school district. And what it always ends up is, we all represent the same parents, we represent the same children. And I know my office was flooded with calls, with concerns about how that could have happened, and particularly for a school like Markham Middle School, which historically has had tough problems. There's crime and violence on the campus. Kids have been afraid to walk to that school because of fear of being recruited by gang members. We've spent money on human relations in that school. The city attorney's office has adopted that school and helped with buying the kids' uniform. My office has helped purchase a van so the kids could be transported safely. And then, to find out that right there in the administrator's office was a problem person who really, you know, was, you know, having inappropriate relations with students. So we, I did it, as well as Councilmember Parks and Perry, we feel like they owe us an explanation, they owe our constituents an explanation on, first of all, how this could have happened. They admitted that there were mistakes, that it was handled poorly, but more importantly, we'd like for them to come and address us, to give us some assurances that this will never happen again. It's very unfortunate that when a kid is sent to the principal's office for bad behavior, only to find out that the bad behavior actually is in the principal's office. And we want that to stop, and we want to be assured that that will never happen again. I have received a letter today from the president of the school board, Monica Garcia. She actually called me also last night on the phone and has told me that because of the pending investigation, this assistant principal is in jail awaiting the trial. Because of all the investigation that needs to take place, right now, they felt it was not appropriate for them to come and speak about sensitive issues in this case, but Monica Garcia did tell me that they have urged the district, once the investigation is complete, to make those reports public. And at that time, she said they'd be happy to come before us and talk a little bit more about what went wrong, but more importantly, how we can prevent that in the future. So I wanted to thank Bernard Parks and Jan Perry for signing on to this, and again, holding the school district accountable to our constituents, our parents, and our children, as well as how this could have happened. So that's what we're here to do. They're obviously not going to be here to report today, but in the future, we think they're going to come to us with answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Weiss?
I was excused for the day.
You had your button pressed?
What?
You had your button pressed? No? Yeah, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. I just want to thank Ms. Hahn for bringing this motion and for speaking out. I heard, I heard Ms. Hahn on the radio the day after this broke, and I know there are concerns and I understand them about the lack of jurisdiction we have here, and that's obviously been a part of a longer, larger debate in the city, in the state. Mr. Weezer's been very involved in that for years. But what happened here is outrageous. And then, the decision that appears to have been made, or at least the sentiments that were expressed about how to deal with those supervisors, in the aftermath of this, were also outrageous. And so, I just want to say, way to go, to Ms. Hahn, for trying to hold people accountable. And I think you are absolutely right in trying to do that.
Mr. Labange?
No, I just want to ask a question. Is there anyone here who could speak? Is there any issue that we have within our system, any of our departments, any that has contact that we want to review to make sure? There's no challenges that were met, that we feel that the school district failed us in, in this issue with the school? Could anybody answer that question? Just, uh-
I don't know if there's anybody here right now.
... just a friendly amendment, if I could ask Ms. Hahn, that we also request our personnel director from the city of Los Angeles to notify all departments, to make sure that all laws related to children are followed to the T, and that there never be a duplicated type of incident in any of our programs anywhere, whatever department it may be in. Because if you know, in the history of Los Angeles, there have been times where there have been unfortunate challenges in various departments, small as it may seem. But as long as we're calling the district on the carpet now, let's call ourselves to the extent to make sure that everybody is followed. So we could just have a friendly amendment, ask the personnel, general manager to notify all departments, to make their aware of these incidents, and make sure we always have child interest at hand and never abused in any way possible.
Okay. Seeing no objection, friendly amendment?
Friendly, yeah.
That's accepted without objection.
Is that all right, Ms. Hahn? Yes, friendly.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just briefly wanted to also stand up and support Ms. Hahn for what she is doing, because we do need to hold all of us accountable to ensure that when we entrust our young people to a public institution, that we are doing everything possible, that they are there in a safe manner and are being taken care of. Schools should be the safest place our kids are able to go to. And when that doesn't happen, we are breaking a social contract that we have with these young people and that we have with their parents. This is outrageous, and I'm certainly looking forward to when we get that report, that we come to City Hall and we work along with the school district to say what can be done to ensure that this does not happen again, and what can be done to hold those people accountable for their actions. So thank you, Ms. Hahn, and thank you for raising this issue so that we all can continue to discuss and find ways to provide a more safe environment for our young people, no matter where they are, but especially at our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Let's go ahead on that item and please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's approved. Is it amended? Next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, please. Let's go ahead and clear the desk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred?
There's our excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Friday, May 23rd, to leave at 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
That takes us down to how many?
I'm sorry?
Sorry?
A motion is required, and that takes council to 10.
Okay, let's hold that on the desk, please.
Okay, there are two-
Any other excuses?
There's an excuse for Wednesday, June 4th, from Councilmember resigning to leave at noon. A motion is required on that one, and that would be 11.
Okay, let's hold that on the desk as well. We'll check on that.
And there's also another one for June 11th. There are two for June 20th. They both meet council policy. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused for June 20th to leave at noon. For personal business, that meets council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
And Councilmember Brewer requests to arrive at 11:00 AM on June 20th for personal business. That also meets council policy.
Okay, she's excused as well.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Now, we will go into closed session in accordance with California state law on the items that are for closed session. They receive public hearings in committee, I believe. Is that correct on both of those, just to double check?
Yes. Uh, I don't believe so.
We have a card then, maybe before we go into closed session. Have those received public hearings yet? On the special agenda items, let's see, we have a card on 34. So we did not, so we'll take the public hearing first. Mr. Zuma Dogg on item 34. Is Mr. Dogg here? Zuma Dogg, item 34, he's gone? Okay. We'll close the public hearing on that one. We have also on closed session, item number 36, and Arnold Sacks, would you like to come forward on 36?
Yes, good morning, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly, this is a closed session item regarding a settlement with the fire department or fire department personnel. So my question would be regarding this, is this being handled by in-house attorney fees or outhouse attorney fees? Recalling what happened with the Tenney Pier settlement, the attorneys in that case got over $1 million. And so, I was just curious to find out if that could be answered. Is that being handled in-house or outhouse? Thank you for your time, answers in a precense.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you for your public comments today on that item, and that will close our public hearing on 36.[1736.78] We'll now go into executive session on this item, which is, or two items, excuse me, which are closed session legal matters. We will come back into open session, should that be required for a public vote as well. We could please ask the council chambers to be cleared and we'll come back into open session shortly. Thank you.
Welcome back to open session on the first item if we can go ahead and forward that to um to whom the city?
To the mayor.
To the mayor, okay. And if on the second item if we can take that up for a vote?
And that is item number thirty-six and that's a claim and David Moore and the settlement amount is one hundred thousand dollars plus salary and overtime and the total would be two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Very good, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, that is approved. Uh next order of business please.
And that clears the desk.
All right, any announcements of a business nature folks? Seeing none, any a fourth with on sixteen to seventeen please without objection? Do we have any adjourning motions today? Okay, now please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions. Okay, Mr. Labanche.
On behalf of our colleague Ms. Hahn, I ask we adjourn in reverend adjourn in memory of Reverend Izam Taylor who passed away last Friday, who was born in Louisiana and studied at Fuller Theological Seminary. He's very active in civic and religious community services here in Los Angeles. He organized the Faithful Service Missionary Baptist Church in nineteen sixty-two and served as its senior pastor until two thousand and five. He survived by his son the Reverend Robert Taylor pastor as well as two daughters Adana and Maxine on behalf of Ms. Hahn.
Thank you very much. Do you have another one?
And just a general comment, I just yesterday we adjourn in memory of those of the tragedy in China and also I wanted to adjourn in memory of the tragedy of the typhoon in Myanmar and the efforts that are going on there to help those people.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And all of us so I could present that to the conference.
Absolutely. Yes, Mr. Wesson.
On the Esam Reverend Taylor adjourning motion, could I be added?
Absolutely, glad Mr. Wesson is a secondary.
Thank you, I've known him twenty years, over twenty years.
Mr. Zain.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have two adjourning motions. The first is for Police Officer Carlos T. Torres, passed away May eleventh. Officer two plus two Carlos T. Torres, serial two three three nine six, passed away Sunday, May eleventh in Rancho Cocomanga. Officer Torres was born May third nineteen sixty, Los Angeles, appointed to the Los Angeles Police Department in nineteen eighty-one, last assigned to Central Traffic Division as a motorcycle officer and blew flowers, a family request donation to be sent to the City of Hope Pediatrics Department. May he rest in peace Officer Carlos T. Torres. And my second adjourning motion for Valley Representative Jill Swift, passed away May nineteenth. Jill Swift was a longtime resident Tarzana, born on August eighteen nineteen twenty-eight in Oak Park, Illinois where she lived until the age of eighteen. One of the founding representatives of the Sepulveda Basin Wildlife Area Steering Committee, instrumental in the efforts to have the wildlife lake permanently supplied with water and was the champion of protecting the open space and passive recreational values of the Sepulveda Basin. Activist for the community, pushed for state federal acquisition of parklands in the Santa Monica Mountains and establishing and leading the Friends of Cabrio Canyon and many other causes, appointed by Mayor Tom Bradley to serve on the city's Recess and Parks Commission and was elected as a member of the Board of Directors of the Topanga, Las Vergenes Resources Conservation District, now known as the Resources Conservation District of the Santa Monica Mountains. She will be greatly missed by her family and friends and survived by three daughters. May she rest in peace Jill Swift.
Mr. Wesson.
Oh.
Yes, we'll add Mr. Labanche to that one. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members, I also rise to adjourn in memory of a good man. Towards the end of last year, my wife and I were fortunate enough to to find a nice home that we purchased in an area called Wellington Square. I've never been welcomed to any community the way that these residents welcomed me. And this past Saturday I found out that one of my neighbors about four doors down Clyde Johnson passed away. Clyde was an individual that was kind of like the glue that kept the the square as we refer to it together. Whenever there was a community function or meeting, you would always count on him to be there coordinating things. He is survived by his wife of twenty years Myrtle Johnson. Clyde was a UCLA grad, he got his masters in finance from the University of Chicago. He enjoyed deep sea fishing and often he'd go off the coast of Baja and bring home fish for the entire community. He was a senior analyst for the county's health department and I just want to say that everybody who's been in Wellington Square for any amount of time owe Mr. Johnson a debt of gratitude for all of the phenomenal things that he did.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. And we'll next be in session this Friday, that is the twenty-third of May ten AM here in John Farrow Council Chambers in City Hall. Have a great day and this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.